Good evening. I would like to call the March 17, 2022, meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over today's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Glover for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Precious Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity for us on this daisies to be able to make decisions that are good for the betterment of all of Greenville. Dear God, I ask that you will bless those who work daily in our offices to keep things going and then keep the city going. Lord, I ask that you bless the entire Greenville City, our constituents, and all who are here, Lord. I ask that you will bless them and keep them in your care. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I am here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes, but the attorney would like to add an item.
Mr. McGirt.
Thank you, Madam Manager and Mayor. Mayor and Council, I would ask that an attorney-client privilege item be added right after Section 11 under comments. I'll read that motion at that time.
All right.
Move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
First speaker is Mr. Walter Fields. Mr. Fields, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Mayor Connolly, council members, my name is Walter C. Fields, and I live in a little section called Brookhaven on the north side of the river. I've already spoken to you in the month of January, but I would like to ask the question to the council members. Have you, have you all raised your hand if you have done a study, a data processing study, an independent economic environmental study on the data processing? If you, if you have raised your hand. Evidently, you have not done a study. Last month, I talked to Rick Smiley on the telephone, and I asked you to do an independent environmental study before y'all make the zoning decision, before you zone in the location of where y'all gonna put the data processing. Have you done that, Mr. Rick? Mr. Smiley?
I have not, no.
Apparently, you have not. Well, I've done a lot of study concerning crypto mining industry. First of all, and I've already stated that crypto mining industry is harmful to the, to the human body. According to research, that it makes lots of noise and even raise your light bill, and it does in other communities that host them. Crypto currency mining does damage to the human health as surely as traditional mining. In the year, researchers also say that crypto mining that make Bitcoin, Etherem, Lithcoin, and Monero alone use more electricity. In the year of 2017 and in the mid-2018, the four together were responsible for between 3 and 15 million tons of carbon dioxide. Researchers also say that crypto currency mining industry tend to locate in areas where there's cheap electricity, but the cheapest electricity isn't necessarily associated with the lowest environmental and health damages that it do. And it is hard to regulate and tighten crypto currency mining and hold them accountable for the damage that they do. So I ask, you are our representative, so I ask you the question, who would benefit from this crypto, from crypto currency mining?
And that's time.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
But the Bible tells me that what, in Mark 8:36, "For what shall it profit a man to gain the whole world and lose his own soul? Or what shall he have in return for his soul?" I don't know about you, but I'd rather have Jesus than.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fields. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, that concludes the list of registered speakers.
All right. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Praise the Lord, and praise the Lord again. As we were reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, at the end of that Pledge of Allegiance, it said, "For liberty and justice for all." Liberty and justice for all. Liberty and justice for all. Again, my name is Vivian Kenyon, and I live across the road beside Welcome Middle School on Brookhaven Drive. I am here to stand in the gap for the children at Welcome Middle School again because I have a passion for children. They, I have a passion for their well-being and their health. When I think about the noise that crypto mining will be making all day long, how are these children will be able to learn and concentrate on their lesson? Some of them are already behind, and with this noise coming, that's gonna put them even further behind. Not only the children are gonna suffer, how about the teachers? How are they going to function? How are they gonna teach the children with all this noise? Children need a quiet, peaceful atmosphere to learn, and crypto mining is not gonna give them that peace of mind. Okay? They will be at a disadvantage, and that's not what teaching or teacher wants to happen. At recess, the children are taken outside to inhale clean, fresh air. Instead, they're gonna be inhaling pollution filled with carbon dioxide and radiation. Many of them gonna fall sick, and that would be another burden on the parents, who are already struggling trying to keep food on the table, trying to, to keep a roof over the head. Okay? And then another thing, many of them don't have insurance. So the parents will be to get them to the doctor or get medicine for them. That means that many children and parents will be suffering. Is that what you want by putting Greenville Utility, making money over the health and well-being of the people? Where's your love and compassion? God said, "Love thy neighbor as thyself." Now, I've said this to Mayor Connolly, and I've said this to some of the other council people, but I wanna say this again because I want this to be heard.
And that's time.
Go ahead and wrap up.
Okay. May I go on?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I want this to be heard. Now, as I told you, Mayor Connolly, there are 11 families in my neighborhood, and out of that 11 families, eight people have been diagnosed with cancer. That's prostate cancer, colon cancer, breast cancer, throat cancer, brain cancer, and lung cancer. Now, we believe it came from the industries that over in north of the river. On the north, there's the corn mill. Behind the corn mill, there's the train exchange station. Right in front of us is all the industries, Burrows Welcome, a ten, and many others that I, I can't name right now. Okay? Then you come on the other side of us, there is the, the airport. All of this radiation and all this carbon dioxide is just blending in together and making us sick in north of the river. Now, I'm gonna say this, enough is enough. Please say no to crypto mining and just send it out of Greenville and put the health and the well, the livelihood and the well health of the people first. Change your yes to a no, no, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
To the mayor and the council members, my name is Freddie Tyson, and I live on the north side of the river, and I would like to say on tonight, say no to crypto. We have been had a peaceful place, I know, for 40 years I've been in Greenville area, and now this facility is coming in. It sort of put me in mind of Superman with the Kripo Knight. When he get close to that, it affect him. By bringing this facility in Pitt County area, it's like Kripo Knight to us, to destroy the wildlife, the residential area, all this noise that it's bringing. And for every, I have done a little study, even the facility that want to bring this here in Pitt County, they don't have that in their state. Why would we allow this to come here in Pitt County? From what I have seen, you all have done a good job here in Greenville, but now I believe it's a time for y'all to do a better job, to reject this system for coming here in Pitt County. I am a stage four cancer survivor. As of today, the doctor don't know where it came from, and I heard some of the ones that talking about what this facility gonna bring to us, the pollution. We don't need it here. Think twice before we say yes to crypto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson, and very thankful to hear that you were able to survive cancer and you're still here with us. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. The first board we have is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I'd like to appoint Kevin Howard and Martin Tansky.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Howard. Congratulations, Mr. Tansky.
Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I still don't have any for the Human Relations Council.
Okay.
Ms. Andrew, you should call me. I'll talk to you tomorrow.
All right. Next is Police Community Relations Committee. Councilmember Smiley.
Continue, please.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels.
Continue, please.
Okay. And finally, we have the Youth Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Continue, please.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, that concludes the appointments.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items, a resolution approving an exchange property with Ward Holdings LLC.
Want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing and is allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreement verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is an ordinance to annex Barrington Fields, Section 2, involving 4.0301 acres located at the current termini of Barrington Drive and Abbey Drive. Lead Chief Planner, Shante Guby, with that presentation. Ms. Guby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. It is located within Barrington Fields, which is on the west side of Frog Level Road. It's located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. It's also located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. It'll be located in Voting District Number Two. It's approximately four acres. Anticipated development is eight single-family lots with, with an estimated tax value $2.5 million, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Guby? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is an ordinance to annex Fieldstone, Section 2, involving 8.4128 acres located at the current termini of Sweet Bay Drive and Cedrus Drive. Again, Ms. Guby.
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. It's located to the west of Allen Road. It's going to be in, or it's located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. It will be located in Voting District Number Two. It's approximately eight acres. Anticipated development is 26 duplex lots or 52 units and an estimated tax value of $8 million, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Guby? All right. Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition, opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We'll move on to item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is an ordinance to annex Nexus Harris Mill Apartments involving 93.87 acres located along the western right of way of B's Barbecue Road and 368 feet north of McGregor Downs Road. Again, Ms. Guby.
This property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It's located along B's Barbecue Road. It's in the Harris Mill Run watershed. It's also located in a preferred growth area on the tiered growth map. It'll be located in Voting District Number One. It's approximately 93 acres. Anticipated development is 200 apartments with an estimated tax value of $45 million, and again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Smiley?
So it says annex Nexus Harris Mill Apartments, but there's actually, there's nothing, no development on the site. Take your moment.
That is correct. It's currently vacant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You were anticipating that. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is an ordinance to annex Whitehall Phase 1, Lot 32, involving .66 acres located at 4405 Spring Pines Road. Again, Ms. Guby.
This property is located in the southeast, southeast quadrant of the city. It's located inside of Whitehall subdivision. This particular property is currently on a septic tank. They wish to do an addition on the property, which means the septic tank is going to be in the way. So they are going to annex into the city so that they can tap on to city sewer. Property is located in the Fork Swamp watershed. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. It'll be located in Voting District Number Five. Again, this is an existing lot, and with the addition, estimated tax value of $180,000, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Guby? Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven is an ordinance requested by Aston Alexander Properties LLC et al. to rezone 27.689 acres located along the eastern right of way of Allen Road and adjacent to Cobblestone Town Homes from RA 20 to R 6. Ms. Guby?
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. It's specifically located on the eastern side of Allen Road. To the south, this is Cobblestone Town Homes, and then to the northeast, this would be Lake Forest Elementary School. This is a photograph of the property. So to your left would be Stanton's Burke Road. To your right would be going towards Greenville Boulevard. The, the property is approximately 28 acres. Currently, it's farmland. All the property that is shown in beige is also farmland. Yellow is single-family, and then the brown, that is multifamily. The property is located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it will require 25-year detention. A floodplain development permit and erosion control will be required, and there also may be jurisdictional wetlands, streams, and buffers. This request may generate a net increase of 1,300 trips per day. Under the current zoning, the property could yield about 95 single-family homes. Under the proposed zoning, the property could accommodate about 300 multifamily units. The requested zoning, which is R 6, or, I mean, back up one second, I said that too quickly. The requested zoning is R 6, and there's already R 6 zoning adjacent to this property. The future land use plan recommends commercial at the intersection of Allen Road and the railroad tracks, and then as you move to the east and to the south, it transitions into traditional neighborhood medium to high density. The requested zoning is part of that character. Again, this request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and the future land use plan. The requested zoning is part of the, the traditional neighborhood medium to high-density character. Staff recommends approval, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to unanimously recommend approval at its February meeting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Guby? Thank you. All right. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I'm Mike Baldwin. I represent Jeff Stallins, Woody Richard, and Billy Michelle, all natives of Pitt County. Hadn't been working with Billy Michelle quite as long as I have the other guys. I'm still trying to figure the name situation out with the two first names and then the, the combination of a male and a female, so, name, so, I don't know. Maybe some confusion at the, the time of birth. But anyway, this property, as Shante said, is in compliance with the, the Horizons 2026 plan. It does provide transitional zoning as we, in the last few months, have gotten the property closest to the landfill zoned industrial IU. Then the next piece, right across the street, we got zoned commercial, and then felt like the, the road was a good transition line for crossing over and having higher-density single-family. And then as you get farther back into Medford Point, that goes back to single-family. So that's in line with what I think everybody considers good planning. You have water sewer facilities to the site. You have a sewer line on the opposite side of the Green Mill Run that is available to the site. You do have significant lane widening, road improvements. I'm not gonna say lane widening improvements, but road improvements coming along Allen Road based on where our proposed intersections fall when the property's developed, and the median that's gonna be in Allen Road and the leftovers will determine how some of the traffic mitigation is, is planned. Really, I foresee just a, really probably a right-hand decal lane. But you do have, well, I mean, it's without a doubt, we're gonna have some wetlands along the southern line, just, just based on the, 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 the growth of trees in there. Farmers, farmers were probably our best guide to development. If it'd have been good land, they'd have pushed it off and farmed it. So they're always kind of a, when you ride out to a site, a good indicator of where your good soils at and where your wet soils are at. So I think that's all I've got. I'll be glad to answer any questions y'all have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Baldwin? Councilmember Smiley?
Is, is all of this parcel in the city limits?
Not at this time, Mr. Smiley. I don't. Not at this time, Mr. Smiley. I don't think any of it is. But during, you know, the development stage, when you bring water and sewer and file a plat, you know, we have to obviously do a volunteer annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Say. All right, motion's been made by Mayor President Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance requested by Happy Trails Farm LLC to rezone a total of twenty-five point one-six acres located along the western right of way of NC forty-three south between Blueville Drive and Covey Drive and adjacent to the Gray Fox Run. For track one, which is seven point six-four acres, the request is to go from OR to heavy commercial. And for track two, involving seventeen point five-two-eight acres, the request is to go from R six A to R six. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This request is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. It's located along forty-three or Charles Boulevard. I'm going to use those interchangeably, but it's the same road. This part, this request is split into two separate tracks. You have track one, which is along forty-three, and then you have track two, which is further to the south in the interior. This is a photograph of the property. So to your right would be going towards Greenville. To your left would be going towards Vancebury. So for track one, again, which is along forty-three, it's for a little over seven and a half acres. The request is from office multifamily to heavy commercial. And then I do want to point out, there is a piece here in the center that has OR zoning, and that is not part of this request. So it's staying the way it is. And then for track two, that is a little bit over seventeen and a half acres. The request is for R six A, that's a medium-density multifamily, to R six. And so that's a high-density multifamily. This is the existing land use. Currently, the property is, there is some farmland. Again, anything in beige you see is farmland. There's currently a single-family home and a multi, and a mobile home on the property. And again, the brown is multifamily. Anything you see in red is commercial. The property is located in the Hardy Creek watershed. If stormwater rules apply, would require ten-year detention. This request could generate a net increase of about thirty-four hundred trips per day. This property will have to have access off of forty-three, so it will not be able to connect to Blueville Drive. A traffic impact analysis, or a TIA, will most likely be required. The intersection at Blueville, or, at Blueville, Blueville Drive, excuse me, that is not a signalized intersection. There are two activity centers within the vicinity of this request. There's one at the intersection of Fire Tower Road and Charles Boulevard. That's a community activity center. That's anticipated to have a coverage area, if you will, of approximately three, three miles. And then there's also an activity center at the intersection of forty-three and Toll Road. That's a neighborhood focus area. And again, that's to provide goods and services for about a one-mile radius. The purpose of the activity centers, when we show them on the map, is to show you where we would expect commercial or high-intensive uses. Also, the purpose of this is, again, to show that we're having nodes of commercial as opposed to commercial stretching all the way down the road. So under the zoning, again, track one, under the current zoning, it would allow about eighty multifamily units. Under the requested zoning of heavy commercial, it could yield about fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial space. That can be convenience store, restaurants, mini storage. And then for track two, it currently is medium-density, so it would be about a hundred and twenty-five multifamily units. And under the requested zoning, it would be about two hundred multifamily units. So the future land use plan, I'm going to start back up at the top at where I started before. You see, you see it recommends commercial sort of around that node of Fire Tower Road and Charles Boulevard. It does extend to the south. This is Signature Drive, right here. And then from there, it sort of branches out, if you will, into traditional neighborhood medium to high density. And so that's on both sides of the street. It does change or step down, if you will, to a medium-density multifamily near the interior, which is sort of this more, I guess I'd call it a pale yellow color. And then also, you do have, at the intersection of Toll Road and forty-three, you do have a corner or an intersection there that's mixed use. And that's exactly what it sounds like. Staff would anticipate commercial and office in that general area. So staff has concerns with this request and that the request is not in compliance with the Horizons, or with the land use plan as residential is recommended in this stretch of forty-three. There's also a potential for spot zoning in this area and that there's no other city commercial zoning in this vicinity. Also, it's not recommended, and also for track two, again, this is recommended for a medium-density multifamily. That request is for a high-density multifamily. So as far as spot zoning, again, the burden of, to establish spot zoning is on the local government. And basically, you have to look at, for establish reasonableness for approving a request. And the factors for determining reasonableness is the size, the particular characteristics of the property, the relation to your comprehensive plan, the degree of change between your current and your proposed zoning, and then also the relative harm or benefit to the owners of the property, but also to the neighborhood and the community. So staff is recommending denial. However, if council wishes to approve this request, then that would mean that your future land use plan is going to be amended to essentially reflect the zoning. So in this case, you would see where track one on your land use plan would show commercial, and then track two would show a medium-to-high-density residential character. If council, and then also as part of that, council, or, excuse me, as part of that, staff has provided the consistency statement within your ordinance to allow you to approve this request. And then at the February fifteenth meeting, planning and zoning recommended to approve it five to two. And I will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smiley?
So could you go back to your map? You said that there was no city commercial nearby. What's there, but it seems like there's a lot of, the ETJ is pretty close to here, right? And the city limits are pretty close to here. Do you have any maps showing what's in the city limits or where the ETJ is?
Okay, so this map is county zoning. So if you see green, that's residential zoning. And if you see red, then that would be commercial. And of course, anything on this map that's shown as white is already within the city.
So you're saying the city limits are, that all of these properties are in the city limits?
They may not be in the city limits, per se, but they would be within our planning jurisdiction.
Okay, so do you have the city limits? I'm just curious, which of these property, it seems like several of our questions, several of our properties today are right there on the border. I was curious where the city limits are here?
Sure, I can show it to you, you know, as, as it makes sense. If your property is not located within the city limits, until you get your entitlements in place, you're probably not going to annex into the city. So this might be a little hard to see, but this is your voting map that we always show you. And so right here is about where we are. So anything in blue has been annexed into the city. And then if it has that light green color, that means it's in our planning jurisdiction, but it's not in the city limits.
And this, and this section is under the star, no doubt, right?
That is correct.
No, no breakup.
I can move the star if you want me to.
No, it's, I just, I'll just guess. Is a, so you can go back forward a little bit to the, to the general, to the future land use map?
Okay.
There. Is R six a TNMH zoning? So is R six, what are, it's TNMH is traditional neighborhood?
Right.
Medium and high density, right?
So R six, it would be the medium to high.
Okay, so this, so this, I guess it's a pink. I'm colorblind. What color is that, Mayor?
That's like a tanish.
The tanish, according to the mayor. He's good at naming colors.
What's pointing to track two? The area that's being pointed to track two?
Just adjacent to it, just to the, to the left of it, it would be a basic, you know, that's a, it would be, it's, the TNMH is adjacent to this property?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
Okay, those are all my questions.
All right, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
So Councilmember Smiley stole my thunder. That was one of my questions. But is this area on Charles Boulevard, is that four lanes there yet, or is it still two lanes? I know some, you know, it's four lanes and goes into two there.
It's starting, right at this point, it's starting to taper down to about two lanes because you have the intersection at Unity, and Unity, which is directly across the street from it. And so now you're starting to go down to a two-lane road.
I was curious if we had an aerial, just to see where it went forward to, what?
I have an aerial.
This will be, it is anticipated all of this will be four lanes out to essentially Conley. Is that right?
I will say it's getting there, that there will be road widening from this section, like you say, from about Conley to connect up to Fire Tower Road. As a matter of fact, hold on one second, if you will, and I can look in the traffic report, and I can give you a much better answer. One second.
I'm just curious to know if, when the Horizons Plan was made, was it also anticipated that this was going to be a four-lane stretch of highway? And would that have impacted the zoning differently?
I would say that at the time that this land use plan was adopted, which was twenty-sixteen, I believe, I would say that it was expected. I don't think there were any projects at that time that were being close to approval, that actually was putting money toward it. But I would say that there is, there was some thought to it, just because of the fact that you have high-density multifamily that's on both sides of the road.
Thank you. I was just curious to know, you know, from a planning perspective, how that impacted it, if at all?
Any other questions? Councilmember Smiley?
How would you anticipate planning, assuming this zoning went through and you had to deal with this? What the, what kind of road connection requirements you would have? I mean, are you going to be requiring that they connect back into Old Fox Lane or anything like that? Or would they be probably coming in all the way off of forty-three?
I think they're going to have to have a curb cut off of forty-three. Obviously, there's already driveways there because of the homes that are there.
Okay.
I do not think that there is, I'm trying to imagine in my mind.
But there's some sort of stub there off of Blueville, which I, looks like Old Fox Lane, but that may not be.
Right. There may be an opportunity for it to connect a little, right here in this general area. I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing, but as of right here, this is like.
In the pink area?
Sure, if we're going to call it pink, the pink area. But, but along this little stretch here, that's already either built or it's a stormwater pond. So it would have to connect further inside.
All right, any other questions? See, no, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Mike Baldwin. I represent Mr. Woody Richard of Happy Trail Farms. And, you know, just in the last week, you know, people asked me, a person asked me, why is Woody always getting you to go out there and get property rezoned for him? And as strictly as I've indicated before, a foreseeable use or idea for a piece of property, when somebody, if he goes ahead and gets it rezoned, it's one less item in a due diligence process that a proposed investor to Greenville has to go through. So there's some, there's some logic to what he, to what he asks. So let's start at, let's just take a ride down Highway forty-three, and let's start at the Dollar General, being a good landmark. Everybody familiar with Dollar General before Signature Drive, right there on the right as you go past Millsport? So we're starting at Dollar General. It's zero point zero miles. All right, that's our benchmark. At zero point one mile, you have Signature Drive. On each side of it, you have commercial zone properties. At zero point two miles, you end the commercial zoning, and you go through a residential. There's some single-family houses. And then there's some multifamily that backs up that comes off Signature. At zero point four miles, you have Glenn Worthington's house. Glenn's Heating and Air. He has bought a larger facility on out forty-three, but he still has his commercial vehicles at his house well, as well. Point five miles, you have Blueville Drive to your right. Also, you have the end of a little small office zoned area. Then at point six miles on your right, you have the subject property, properties, two-zonings. Point eight miles, also the mobile home park to the left has just been purchased by the group out of California, who has purchased so many other mobile home parks in Greenville and are upgrading them. I don't know if they use different entities, but before, it's been the Saratoga Group. Point eight miles on the left, you have Hills Convenience Store slash a little bit of everything store and a sweepstakes operation. Point nine miles on your right, you have a mulch business. One mile on your left, you have a car sales and a U-Haul business. One point two miles on your left, you have a bar and a nightclub. It's had a few names over the past. Then one point three miles, and that's going to be the end of the road trip, you have a, on the left side of the road, you have a, under the county zone and a commercial lot, two or three acres. And then on the right, you've got a sizable mini storage. So this is anything but a residential corridor. As it exists now, and then we need to bring in the county plan into this, because I think it has a lot to do with the word reasonableness. And I hate, I'm not throwing darts at the Horizons Plan, but I have not talked to a single person, and I've talked to quite a few, who thinks this property going out forty-three through this area should be residential. I mean, it just, I mean, it is not a residential corridor. Toll Road, where we referenced the community activity center. Toll Road has two-hundred-and-fifty trips per day on it from Worthington Road to the road that connects back to County Home Road. That road has approximately five to six hundred trips. So now we're looking at about eight-hundred-and-fifty trips per day on Toll Road at the intersection of forty-three. Y'all, it will not be a, what I would call it, and what is, the city identifies as a community activity center. A commercial investor has to have more ADT at an intersection than that. Eight-hundred-and-fifty trips 850 trips per day, I'm sorry, is not gonna cut it. I think there's any developer in town, there's any realtor in town, that will tell you that. So, Shontae, can you bring in the county zoning on this? The, the future, the future plan? All right, so that's the future plan of the county zoning, just been complete, less than a year, I think. You know, it's, it's not a, a planning contest between the city and the county, but I, I have to agree, the, the red makes more sense. It fulfills the word of what I think is understood as reasonableness, and it matches what's out there. And yes, that's why our plan, our request is reasonable. When, when Woody first came to me about this property, I looked at him, I said, "No, man." Y'all said, "I'll draw the map for you, but I, you know, I don't, I don't have, I have a problem with representation." Until I rode out there a little bit more, and you know, and it's about, this is a bunch of trip on every day, and every night, and every morning. But there's no warm feeling about commercial, I mean, about residential along this. Then we've got the 43 widening improvements, this is a three-lane road, well, it's two lane with a center turn lane. So then we've got the, let's talk about the high-density zoning. Y'all can all look around now and see what's happening with these multifamily projects we're having. We've got the Legacy out on Bayswater, we've got 904 West out across from what used to be the KNW, where we just got the benefit of a signalization, only due to the efforts of the city and the developer who helped initiate that. So again, we're driving, now we have signalization for that, all that traffic coming out of Physician East, and also all the traffic that'll come out of, from 904 West. At the end of Arlington, at 43, Town Taff has made a huge investment in larger acreage apartment complexes. We just, under review right now, in, in planning, being held up by TIA, we've submitted a plan for the Dickinson, over 200 units. And then we've got another plan fixing to turn in beside Grace Church, where was gonna be student housing called the Charles. What I'm saying there is, these investors, these people who are benefiting Greenville as well as benefiting from Greenville, need 20 acres to make the numbers work, to have enough units to justify the extensive amenity package that these guys are putting in. They're putting in huge pools, they're putting in huge clubhouses, fire pits, cabanas, the works. You go out to the Legacy and look at it, you go out to Mr. Task Project and look at it, you go out to 904 West, you know, we just finished it. I mean, this is market rate of multifamily in an area where market rate needs to be. It's not, the student housing, I think you've proved that with studies already that was done several years ago, belongs closer to town. So to attract these, a, a 20, a, a, a 20-acre site generates a tax, a tax value of about $45 million. I don't normally play the, the tax, the tax deal gain implications and the benefits, but it does stand, look at what these guys are doing. And it takes, girls, to, it takes, it takes that acreage, so that's why we're asking that, to build upon what's already zoned for high-density, to give us enough room to attract that, that bigger market unit type development. We will, I've seen some of the, just going through the old research, the connection with Blue Bill upon development, we will have to stub in, in that, Shontae, am I getting running up just about out of time?
About there.
Okay. Well, we do have, over at Blue Bill, there is a, a planned stub to this property, so we will, and we'll have to take it to the, I mean, to the south as well. So I think that with the, the improvements that are going on, with the, the county's plan that fits a whole lot better, for some reason, than, than what we've got before us.
And that's time?
Can I have just, I think everybody else. I think we've satisfied the, the, the issue of the spot zoning and the reasonableness. The reasonableness is there. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
And I would, time's up, five to two vote from planning board.
Thank you. Seen none? Thank you very much, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. Seen none? Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. All right, seen none? Public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion's made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Litchfield. Should we hold off and wait for, we're missing one, before we vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes, it is 6-0, even though he's not here.
We'll let him know when he gets in.
Say yay back there.
All right. Move on to item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is an ordinance requested by Commercial Office Centers LLC to amend the future land use plan, land use and character map for 25 acres from office institutional and mixed-use high-density to residential high-density for the property located along the southern right of St. Stansburg Road, roughly between Stansburg Road and Allen. Again, Ms. Gooby.
This is, this is a request to amend your future land use plan. Again, I think you're all aware of the purpose of your land use plan, and so this would be anticipation of a rezoning request. This property is located in the western section of the city. It's more specifically located along Stansburg Road or 264. I'm gonna reference it, so I just want to go ahead and point out, if you've lived in Greenville long enough, you'll know that this is also called Old Stansburg Road, so I don't want you to be confused when it sounds like I'm basically using the same name. And then to the right, this is Allen Road. Across the street, this is Waterford Place Apartments. So this is a photograph taken along Stansburg Road, so to your left would be Torfident. This is the zoning map. Currently, this property is zoned MO, or medical office. There is one little stretch right along here, this is actually a leg that gets you to this particular property, but this is a future land use plan change map amendment, so it doesn't have any bearing on this piece of property. So this is our current future land use, which sounds a little strange. I'm gonna start at the corner of Stansburg Road and, and Allen Road, that's shown as mixed-use, high-intensity. And then at the other corner, basically of 264 and Old Stansburg Road, you have commercial. So under our current plan, we have office institutional. This is basically, it acts as a transition, and it acts as a buffer between what you would sort of think of as, as higher-intensive uses on, on the two opposite corners. So the request in front of you tonight is for high-density residential, and you can see that the high, high-density residential is located to, to the north of the property, and then it's also located to the southwest and to the southeast of the property. Based on the difference between the existing character and the requested character, basically there was a, a, an, an anticipated decrease in traffic. I'm sorry, let me go, go back and make another point. So under the current land use plan, again, you could anticipate some kind of, starting here at the corner, you could anticipate a hotel, or a convenience store, or perhaps a retail strip center. Under this piece of property here, it would anticipate to yield about 300 multifamily So again, this is the property located on the south side of Stansburg Road. So the Comprehensive Plan Committee, as it was working on the Horizons Plan and the future land use plan, they established eight principles of when they were looking at land use. And I'm just gonna take you down to number eight, which I think is reflected in this request, which is sustainable development practices. And so in staff's opinion, this, this new request of the land use plan is still going to create a sustainable development practice. So staff recommends approval of this request, and then at the February 15th meeting, the planning and zoning voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? For Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Smiley?
So it looks like this parcel is also, would be, is not in the city limits, but seems to be almost surrounded by the city limits?
That's right.
And am I correct that the, it's Radio Station Road, is that the, the name of the little input?
Yeah, that's that little, little road that comes in like, at a triangle.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Gooby? Seen none? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Brian Fiegundis.
Good evening.
Kind of nice to be back in here, so.
Yeah.
I have not been back since we've been back in person, it's nice to see you guys actually in person. As Ms. Gooby requests, or stated, this request is a land use plan change. We feel like, in, in order to provide, some of the things that we're seeing is shifting trends in the context of medical center, residential demand, Vident Health residential demand, Southwest bypass, extension and proximity to that, this request really is precipitated by a lot of those factors that are, that are kind of coming about over the last year, plus or minus. The request still provides for good transition between the commercial node, this at Old Stansburg, it's weird to say Old Stansburg and Stansburg, down where Speedway and the Walmart Neighborhood Market are, as well as preserving the hard corner at Allen Road. So the request is for, for a high-density residential change. With that, if you guys have questions, I'm glad to try to answer them, but, but don't have a whole lot to add from what Ms. Gooby already presented.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fiegundis? Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. Seen none? Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. All right, seen none? Public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number 10.
Mayor and council, I'd like the council to, to return back to item eight. Councilmember Bell didn't vote in that item, and technically, under state law, it was a 5-0 vote with Councilmember Bell abstaining. I think he wants to vote, so I would allow him to vote on that.
Well, he did vote, didn't he?
No, he was, he was absent.
But isn't it, isn't a, a vote affirmative? If he's...
No, for zoning cases, other, other matters, yes, it's an affirmative vote if you leave, but for zoning, it's an abstention.
Yes.
That was a change in state law.
Aye.
Does that work?
That works.
Did we cover the bases?
We good.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, item number 10 is an ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at 1305 West Fourth Street, known as tax parcel 21925. I'll call forward Deputy Director of Planning and Development Services, Les Everett, for that presentation. Les?
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
I've come to you tonight with a request for a demo of 1305 West Fourth Street. Here you have the tax parcel information. This is an aerial view, giving you a location of the property. This property has been vacant for several years, definitely prior to 2019. We have no active utilities on site, and Greenville Utilities has confirmed there have been none for many years again also. The building and land values are there for a total top property tax value of $24,016. The estimated cost to repair is over $100,000. And keep in mind, this estimate is to meet the minimum code and housing standards. The repair estimate exceeds 50% of the building value, so it meets the dilapidated criteria. Estimated cost of demolition is $8,000. And I'd like to show you a few pictures. If you would note, this house on the outside is gonna appear, at most places, to be covered in vinyl siding. It's been discovered that the vinyl siding, the wood members behind the vinyl siding are very dilapidated and deteriorated. And as we go through, you will be able to see. Excuse me?
Has there been a fire?
Uh, no, ma'am, just leaks and deterioration. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of dwelling located at 1305 West Fourth Street, parcel number 21925. And as always, we'll be ready to take action after following the 90-day waiting period. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Everett? Seen none?
Thank you.
Nice green shirt today. Shontae, nice green. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none? Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none? The public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 11, our final public hearing of the night.
Thank you, Mayor. Final public hearing is a resolution and lease agreement for lease of parking spaces at the Fourth Street Parking Garage related to hotel development agreement with the City and Greenville Ventures, N.C., LLC, and City Attorney McGirt has the presentation. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Madam Manager, Mayor and Council. This is item 11, and it's for a resolution and a lease agreement for a lease of parking spaces at the Fourth Street Parking Garage. On August 31st, 2020, the city entered into economic development agreement with Greenville Ventures North Carolina LLC. The agreement provided the following terms, the sale of the Evan, the city's Evan Street property. As you know, the, the hotel developer has broken ground. Under the development agreement, the developer has to invest at least $12 million or more to develop the hotel. And the agreement also provides the ability to use the Fourth Street parking deck for patron parking, use of, use of the facility, and installation of automated parking system. But the development agreement did not give a duration of how long the developer would have access to the parking garage to lease the required spaces. The developer will be building a minimum of 90 spaces. So, the purpose here is to enter into a lease agreement to give the hotel developer a lease. They are requesting up to 90 years because they need that for their project and to shore parking for their hotel guests. The initial term of the lease is a 10-year term, and it has an automatic renewal of up to 80 times of one-year terms. The lease will start once the tenant developer receives a certificate of occupancy from the city. So, this matter is on for public hearing. And after the public hearing, city staff asked the council to approve the lease agreement with Greenville Ventures for the use of the city's Fourth Street parking deck. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McGirt?
What were the, how many, can you go back to the description of the spaces?
I don't know. This presentation talks about the spaces, but they will lease up to 90 spaces. The first 10 spaces, they'll pay the 100% of the rate in the manual fees. And the other 80 spaces, they'll pay 30% of the, in the manual fees. But they're going to lease a minimum of 90 spaces.
And are they, when it renews, are they basically accepting, they would, I guess they would, it would renew automatically unless they chose to opt out of it?
Right.
Or is it solely at their option?
Yes, at their option.
And they would be required to, they would, they would be taking the spaces in their condition at the time, right? I mean, I'm just saying, you know, is this obligating us to maintain a parking deck in that location for 90 years, right? Or is it, if the parking deck went away and they just could, they were like, okay, well, obviously, we're not going to renew the lease. If there's no parking deck there, we need to take.
Very good question.
The lease gives us the opportunity and the right to conduct, to bring an eminent domain action and condemn the spaces. But as long as they're operating a hotel under the lease agreement, they have a right to the parking spaces at the Fourth Street deck.
So, I guess my question is, if, you know, 40 years from now, you know, we decided we don't want a deck there anymore.
I'll raise the vote, council.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, does this lease represent an impediment to us, you know, turning a parking deck into, you know, I don't know, a 40-story tall office building, right? I mean, you know.
Yeah. Well, the lease says, as long as they're operating a hotel, they have a right to use the deck. Now, the city does have a right of eminent domain. But other than that, if they're operating a hotel, they will have a use to these spaces. That's the, that's the.
Well, I mean, they would have the, they would have the right to renew the lease.
Automatically renew it, right.
But they looked at it and were like, well, you know, it's a pile of rubble. Like, we aren't interested in leasing that. I mean, but they would have, you know, obviously, they would, could decline to renew the lease, but they don't have a, would they have the ability to require us to turn it back into a parking deck?
No. Have you said we became rubble? Or what do you, what's your?
Well, I mean, I like, I would say, I don't know if this is what you're going with, but like, we've had a couple of structures where we've gone in there, we've done inspections of these structures, and we found that they're not structurally stable. In the event that the city were to find out that, you know, potentially, this cannot be rebuilt or cannot be fixed, we tear the thing down. You know, are we legally obligated to provide them with the spaces?
Again, we have the right of eminent domain. So, we could condemn the spaces and say that for, we need the spaces for a public purpose.
Okay. Okay. Sounds like we're tough to pin down.
Hi. He's an attorney. He's not giving us a yes or no. He's not giving us a yes or no decision here. No matter how many angles we go, he's not going to give us a yes or no.
Thank you, and bad answer.
Any other questions for Mr. McGirt? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Everyone else has three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion. Move to approve. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Glover. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We will move on to other items of business. Yep, other items of business. Item number 12, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item this evening is a presentation on gateway signage. And just as a note, this is a project the city staff started before the pandemic. The idea was to look at what possible signage options we would have. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Mulligan. He'll provide a little information and then introduce you to some consultants who have been advising the city. Kevin?
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Good to be before you and to give you an update on, as City Manager was saying, the gateway signage. I do want to introduce our consulting team, Jason Galloway from McAdams, as well as Buzz Bezell. So, let me just give you a little history of how we got to where we are tonight. So, in early 2020, the city advertised the RFP for Design Services for Gateway Signage. The city council in particular wanted a focal sign highlighting the entrance into Greenville at the 264 interchange. And one of the drivers of this project was the fact that NCDOT is widening Allen Road, which is where our current signage into Greenville is. And that will be, need to be relocated or removed as part of the Allen Road widening. So, getting back to the RFP, the city received several RFPs in late March of 2020. Immediately after receiving these, we kind of shut this project down, put it on hold as a result of COVID-19. And then, during the latter part of 2021, the city entered into a contract with McAdams Company. This project was authorized to proceed. So, again, joining me from McAdams team is Jason Galloway. The Public Works McAdams team has been working with the city manager's office as well as a stakeholders group. That stakeholders group involved ECU, involved GUC, ENC Alliance, as well as PGV Airport to run through and develop multiple design options. Tonight's presentation is really twofold, bring counsel up to speed on where we're at, as well as hear from counsel on proposed steps forward. All right. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Galloway.
Kevin, could you go to the next slide?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, tonight, good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're going to go through some team introductions. We're going to talk a little bit about the inspiration that we have for the sign. And then, we're going to show you guys how we developed the concept and then finally, just touch on the concept.
Can you go on this side?
Okay.
I'm not taking things a little easy. I work from behind, behind the scenes.
All right. So, as Mr. Mulligan mentioned, my name is Jason Galloway. I work for McAdams. We're a multidisciplinary survey, planning, landscape architecture, and engineering firm, and joined today by Mr. Bezell. He's a industry leader in signage, wayfinding, and branding.
Yeah, just to, we'll jump in here real quick. This again is the Allen Road sign. This sign will be part of, the roadway will be expanded. It will take up the space where the sign is currently located. The size of this sign does not allow us to really move this out towards 264 interchange. It's just too small. The scope, the expanse of the 264 interchange would really dwarf this sign.
So, does that mean taken to the airport? Is that right?
We've met with the airport, and we're talking to them about perhaps bringing some pieces of this that they can utilize. They're actually looking into utilizing their own branding on a signage out there. But maybe some piece of this will be brought out to the airport. You know, the base of this is a brick wall. We wouldn't be able to really bring that, but some of the Greenville or the background, we may be able to bring.
So, we were tasked to take a look at your primary signage and also look at some secondary and tertiary signage. Today, we're only going to present our primary signage. The secondary and tertiary signage will be in the same character as the primary signage. So, we have not quite yet developed those. We want to receive direction on the primary signage before moving forward. The primary gateway signage is going to be located on 264, coming from west to east in the town. Some other locations that we're looking at, some secondary, tertiary signage on other gateways, on Dickinson, on Charles, and then several others throughout the town. And we will, we have not yet moved forward with those. We will only move forward with those as funding and time allows. Hand it over to Buzz to talk a little bit about the inspiration.
That's really good. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation and what we have going here. When we were first contacted and developed the team, we were told what is very unique from Kevin's perspective. He wanted us to design based on color and light. And usually, we talk about structure in these type of monument designs. And so, our initial idea to develop the inspiration for this is to look at the town of Greenville. Number one, from a visitor's perspective, residents have their own perspective. But when you're talking about a gateway and we're welcoming visitors to Greenville, we want to be educated about that, but also have a story to tell to visitors. And if we can connect something from the entrance to your town, to the center of your town, it's even better. So, our study identified what we thought were monumental, iconic architectural features of the town. There are so many. And we lean toward history, and then we lean toward now. And the strongest identifiers that we had, one, was the exoskeletal transit center building. It really identifies. And we've noticed that trend has been taken further with the ECU campus and the building there. The other part of that color and light story was Sycamore Hill Gateway Plaza and the stained glass, which just so beautifully tells such a story. So, we decided to start with those ideas to begin with and create a system of designs. And Jason, do you want me to go through here? Okay. That would be good. Well, the initial site visits were mainly to help develop a scale and mass of a sign that would be readable and proportionate to that main intersection there. We created preliminary concepts for the stakeholders groups that ranged from highly technical signage with color and light and stained glass all the way to redesigning the bridge, which is 178 feet wide. So, when you think about what that involves and what type of sign that idea is, we went from there to even freestanding letters that were almost 10 feet tall and one foot thick. And it was very interesting to get the comments from the stakeholders and the options and the directions. And like Kevin mentioned, the stakeholders group was a very good balance of people who are interested in history, development, the new, the old, and the exciting. So, that was, that was very good. So, the, these are better drawings that show what we looked at. And just to give you an idea of some of the comments, design option number one was a favorite, but the stakeholders felt like it would be susceptible to vandalism, hard to maintain. It would become a selfie location in the middle of a highway. Design option two is a grand, is a grand desire, but it also involves a lot of coordination with NCDOT that could take years to get to the point to build that. Design option three is, we'll just sort of call that a monument, what that is. Now, one thing that you'll see some of the other drawings on that, the dimension of that and how those beams that are similar to the transit center become a part of the sign and tell the story, the dimension of what's there. Design options four and five combine several historic buildings within, in Greenville's architectural scope. And it's very interesting where we see a little bit of how that depth comes into play. The letters themselves are huge. And one of the big questions that we're asked all the time is, is this sign big enough? Or is it small enough? And I'll let you know that from the perspective of this particular sign, it's as big as your diocese, this entire area. The ceiling is about 16 feet. The width is 34 feet or more. So, if you imagine just this size, that's how large this is. And then, on top of that, the technical part of that is the four-feet lettering. Now, the four-feet lettering is visible from a half mile. Now, it depends on who is looking, you know, and their vision from that. But for a person with 20/20 vision and a clear path of space, you could read that from 2,500 feet away. That's a, that gives us an idea of how big the structure needs to be. And that's how we build and determine what the size of this is. And, you know, per Kevin's request, these signs have multiple ways to change color. And it's more about lighting at night than versus visibility of the day. So, we use reflective materials when possible, and the signs can change colors. There's a system out there. It's called Spectralight. And it's basically like a remote for your TV, only much more high-tech. And there is a cell phone receiver inside the technical lighting system. And a person from a remote location can change the lighting from green to purple, to all green, to different colors. And it really does make it, give you a third layer to communicate to visitors as they come in, especially for a particular type of an event.
Good job going with purple as the alternative color.
That's true. That's true. These three-dimensional drawings show you the scale of what this type of sign would look like in the day. Also, from a lighting standpoint, your Greenville logo is illuminated, the large Greenville lettering, the "Welcome to", and then that, those exoskeletal beams, which will be aluminum, but they will look like wood, they are backlighted, so they cast a shadow against the back. And the darker level of green that is going down at an angle, that is illuminated as well. So, for North Carolina, this probably would be one of the most interesting concepts on the highway as far as a welcome sign because of the color. No one has requested that, and it's not, not anywhere in North Carolina. This panel shows more of what the sign looks like, and that top-left image really gives you an idea of the size and how that masses. One key to making this size bigger is landscape. And the landscape plan is also color coordinated with what we have there. So, that gives us an idea of design number one or the, one of the stakeholders group's favorite. This was the second. That combination between, let's call it the Old Well and the Old Courthouse coupla. Those, so we divided sort of that look and just went with a feeling more than an actual reproduction of what those were. Again, this entryway is still about the size of your diocese, 35 feet long. Only, it's, it's close to 25 feet tall with that tower. That gives us option number two as far as lighting because not only is the tower internally illuminated where the lettering is and where that archway is, the, it has uplighting that goes there. The uplighting can change colors as well. One thing that's kind of unique about anything we build with that tower or that roof is it gives us the opportunity to boost some of the electricity requirements with solar. We build the tower top out of solar panels. And so, it would. We build the tower top out of solar panels, and so it would light a lot of that in some cases. This particular drawing shows the daytime, and again, you see all of those layers as they step back. That base platform is five feet wide, and so the signage and the letters, I believe they're eight inches thick and internally illuminated and backlight, so it shines light up against that green panel, which is really a great option. Here we see that at night and how it looks. It has a warm glow against the architectural structure, but the word Greenville is bright and easy to see. The other part that this sign brings into play is water, and that's that swerving, swerving shape of the top of the backdrop. So it ties in a little bit of historic architecture and some water and color and light as well. The light green panel, which is, there's one, two, three layers of light, that is changeable. So it could be green, it can be blue, whatever it decides to be according to what events go on. The green panel behind the sign is green, so it stays green. And that gives us an idea of what we're looking at and where we are so far are these two design options to take a look at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Buzz.
Jason. So next steps, sort of pending city council direction, approval of option A or B, we would like to move forward with final design permitting construction of the sign. So thoughts?
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
I like, I like number five. I like design option B, but of the numbers, I think it was one through five, I liked five.
I liked five also. If you go back, way back in the slides, there was one through five. Yeah, there you go.
Right there.
The one with the cupola on top?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So it would need to be a cupola.
Yeah, and they used to look like something in Greenville. It doesn't even look like something at the university, because we're trying to identify ourselves as Greenville and not ECU Greenville. But, you know, I just, if you do a cupola or something like that, right around town found some old thing. What about the library?
I'll tell you that east...
I said, what about the library? They have a little nice front. I mean...
Councilmember Bell?
We mentioned stakeholders. Who was brought in on just kind of giving feedback on this?
ECU was part of that, GUC, ENC Alliance, and PGV, members of those organizations. And their preference, the stakeholders group and as well as the city manager's office, was design options four and five.
Thank you.
I'll say that ECU really liked design option five.
No doubt.
You could also, ECU liked divine.
Yeah, but we don't want to do that cupola thing like that. It has to be something that identifies Greenville. Greenville is losing its identity to ECU. Not I have anything against ECU, but, you know, if you say Greenville, they don't know where it is, but if you say ECU, they know where it is.
That's great.
So, but, but still, I think, I like the thing right there with the G on it, the Greenville thing, that little thing right there can go off.
Just a flat top.
Just a flat top. I mean, even if you do just like the little pointed thing here, option four, if you did just a little pointed thing with the G there, I think it identifies Greenville more.
So we do like design option two, I mean, not, what was it, A and B? We like, I think we're agreeing, B is the favorite, the winner?
Yeah, I like that one, the one with the green, with the light lit up, you could say it's Greenville.
I'm just trying to help move this thing.
Is anybody like design A as their preference? No one? Okay. So everyone's preference would be design option B.
Some version of B, yeah. That massing.
Yeah. So we're all in agreement with that?
Yeah. Now, how tall, how tall would this Greenville, Welcome to Greenville be? It has to be told what it is now because it's just...
The sign with that column is about 25 feet tall. I can go back to this, it's four feet, about 13 feet tall by 26 feet, 30, 30 feet, 13 by 30 feet is that sign. But the column itself extends to about 24 feet, 25 feet.
Councilmember Smiley?
And if, you know, you talk, when you start talking about, you know, the finial or the top or the crown or whatever it is, the, if you like the idea of a, if we like the idea of something cupola-like, you know, but you don't want to expressly reference university, you know, it's a county building, but the county courthouse has a really interesting finish, figure at the top of it too, that was, could be called, that you could, that could be partially, could partially inform the design.
What kind of figure are we talking about?
I'm sorry, what?
What kind of figure are you talking about?
I'm sorry, about the, the finial at the top of the county courthouse? There's the clock tower up there, and it's not a cupola, it is a cupola, but it's not a, it's not the shape of the ECU one, it's more of a, it's a different look.
Okay, I think that would bring some problems because, you know, a courthouse is built...
I was gonna say, if we don't want, if we don't want to be known as ECU, I'm sure we don't want to be known as a courthouse.
No, Sam. Just talking about prominent...
It was built by slaves.
Prominent buildings in town.
I think, I think, I just like it just like that.
If you like...
I like five.
I mean, if you want to put a little pointed cupola up there, a little pointed little top up there, that's fine, as long as it says Greenville.
But can it just be a flat top since, I mean, we both, we all agree that we like the design? I guess it's the top of the design that's debatable. Can it?
Yeah, I mean, it could, it could be flat, we could show different materials. The material spec that here is an aged copper dome cupola, so, or it could be, you know, a copper that has then a green patina as it starts to age.
That seems to be basically the only difference.
I like that, I like the copper.
Is it copper or is it solar panels? I couldn't remember the...
Well, option four would have the solar panels. Option five is actually an eight-sided dome, so it is copper.
Okay.
Councilmember Litchfield?
So this is gonna be kind of a grand entrance to Greenville, right? A lot of people may be coming back to Greenville after graduating from East Carolina, right? It could be months, it could be years, it could be a decade before they come back to Grand entrance, and the first thing they see is something that brings back memories from their time at East Carolina and on campus. And I don't think we should shy away from the relationship with ECU because of a cupola. I think we should embrace it, and if it doesn't say ECU, see an E or C or U on there, it's just a cupola that people can remember, and some of the memorable images of other colleges or those structures, right, on the campuses, so...
Well, you talk about on the campuses, not, not a welcome sign into Greenville. I don't think, if you've ever went to ECU, you probably wouldn't forget it.
Well, maybe we should just take a look.
One, one question I got. Madam Manager, I want to say maybe a couple of years ago, we hired a consulting firm to kind of talk about the identity of Greenville. Do you remember that? Kind of what, do you remember what like the words were?
I do, I'm sorry, Mayor, I do not right now, and I, I could, I can get those back to you.
No, 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 like the words, so like, we had a consulting group that basically, they're like, you know, I think one of the questions was like, what, if there's one word that, you know, would describe Greenville, what would it be? And I specifically remember, I think one of them was pirate, right?
I will say, Mayor, I do remember that, that in that work, if you remember, there was a Wordle where they used words and...
Yes.
Pirate and ECU were, was a very significant part of the identity of Greenville as people filled out the survey. I do, and I can send you all, I can, I know I have the Wordle, and that I can send you all, which is not a game, it is actually, and I can send that to you so you can have it. But pirate and university were a big part of that.
But if I remember correctly, that was the thing that wanted us to focus on Greenville because we want it to be, we didn't want it to be known as ECU. We wanted it to be separate, so we went back.
I'd have, it's been several years, there's been a worldwide pandemic in the meanwhile, and I don't remember, and I can certainly go back to...
City managers know everything.
Well, I think that, I think, that doesn't matter as long as Greenville is identified by itself. I don't, you know, I don't know, ECU may want to put something out there or not, but I think if we're paying for it with citizens of Greenville's money, you know, ECU is part of Greenville, but it's not really a stable part of Greenville. These students come in and go, come and go, come and go. So, I mean, I really want to keep our identity, so option four or five is fine, but I don't care about the cupola.
It's not gonna say ECU anywhere or anything like that.
I know it's not.
And I wouldn't say that we...
But if you put a pirate up there...
Yeah, and I wouldn't say that they come and go, because I mean, you can look at up here, I think you got one, two, three, four people that aren't from Greenville, that we came to ECU and we stayed here also.
Just, you know, what, what would Greenville be without ECU? I mean...
That's, that's, that's it.
Would be Kinston.
No, they wouldn't have any identity. They would be...
Or another town, I mean, similar in eastern North Carolina, right? I mean, think about it. Would be Rocky Mount, Washington.
Ginger's writing that quote down right there.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that disrespectfully, just without the ECU and the growth of the university, it'd probably be a smaller eastern North Carolina town.
Councilmember Smiley?
I would say, I would encourage us to, if we're, if you want to put a cupola up there, and I got, you know, I'm generally in support of that, then I, don't make it a generic one, right? I mean, if we're gonna call out, if we're gonna call, if we're gonna do a call-out to a shape, you know, then we should try to nail that shape, and this one, this, that the shape, that shape there and what's on the top of the drawing are, you know, that's an interesting, you know, unique thing. It may actually be copyrighted, I'm not sure. And the other one, though, is, looks a little like, and maybe it was just the one that was in the clip art program, but I would encourage us to, if you're gonna make a reference, an architectural reference, let's, let's be specific.
But one of the biggest things when we did the other sign, one of the biggest things was that Greenville didn't have, you know, you're taking away Greenville's identity. And I think your mom agreed with me, Rick, that we were taking away the identity. If we didn't put anything up there with the tobacco thing and all that on it, because she actually told me what, I forgot what the little thing that you wrap around the top and sell the tobacco that way. But anyway, come up with a design. If you want to put a cupola on, come up with the sign, maybe light it up, light it up from the top or something.
So are there any, is there any other opposition to five? You just don't, you don't like the identity of the university? That's, that's the only, I guess, feedback. Everything else with the sign is okay? Okay.
I think both four and five look good, so, I mean...
That's what I'm thinking, four and five, either four or five. You could make, you could make this thing a little, the, on four, you could make the little thing, the cupola, look a little different than what it looks now, like just a pointed...
What if we, what if I identified number four and five and we put it out to the public to vote for it?
We could do that, if I could just share, Brock did remind me that hidden gem was a big component of the work that we had done when we were trying to understand Greenville's identity, hidden gem. And that's part of the reason that we ended up with an Emerald loop. I don't know if there is a way to even think about incorporating Emerald or hidden gem into the sign. Now, we clearly, if you would like, we could put, we could do one of two options. We could ask the McAdams and Buzz to refine the design based on some of this conversation tonight, okay? Or, or we could put it out for the community to weigh in. I wouldn't necessarily vote, but just say weigh in.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I'll be honest with you, though, I'd hate for us to just, you know, kill this over and over again and have them come back and then we say, well, we don't like this, and then go back, and the next thing we know, it's like, three years down the line, we've had another pandemic in the meantime, and this is, you know, I, I mean, my, my concern is that, you know, we could go and refine this as much as possible. I mean, I'm okay, I like both concepts too. I mean, my preferred option is five, but...
That's what I do.
I'm fine with four or five, they're both okay.
Does anybody have any opposition with four or five?
I like the, you know, we've been talking about the top, I like the shape of the column on five much better. You know, it's got the recessed lighting area, and it, the top is smaller than the bottom, you know, that it seems much more in proportion.
And then is it gonna be blue or is it gonna be green?
Councilmember Litchfield?
I'd like to make a motion to move with option five and have, take Rich's recommendation on the top to be very specific, not generic.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion?
I do. What do we mean by not, I must have missed something, when you say not generic in motion, and I apologize, I stepped out of the room.
Oh, I was just saying that if you're going to put a cupola on top of a sign, it shouldn't be a generic cupola that doesn't exist anywhere. Yeah, that we may or may not have, you know, everybody may or may not like the idea of specifically referencing ECU on this sign, but if you're going to reference a cupola, it ought to be the ECU cupola, it ought not to be a, you know, cupola from some other place. That was my, that was my suggestion.
All right. Any other discussion? So I will, the motion is to move forward with design number five, design option number five, and allow the design team to basically, I guess, make modifications to the cupola to make it look...
More closely resembling the one that we're trying to point out.
Closely resembling the cupola on ECU's campus. Is that good? Everybody understand, is everybody okay with that?
Now, Kevin, are you more...
Feasible?
You got, you got direction? Okay.
There's a cupola on top of this equipment. There was a church before.
Cupola building.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes.
Unanimous. Does that give you guys a good direction?
That's perfect.
If not, we can't do, that's the best we can do, I'm sorry.
Construction starts in April. All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report.
All right. Comments from the mayor and the city council, Councilmember Litchfield, Councilmember Meyerhoff?
I'm all set, Mayor, thank you, no questions.
Councilmember Smiley? Councilmember Bell?
No comment.
Councilmember Daniels?
No comment.
All right. Comments from the Mayor Pro Tem Glover. Here we go.
Ah, I gotta watch. I just want to say, as we look at what's happening in the Ukraine and see all the devastation of people's lives and see people being buried in holes, just, just don't know who they are, just throwing them in the hole, I, I want to make sure that, I want to ask you all to pray for the people of Ukraine and that hopefully, whenever everybody decides what they're gonna do, they will get some help. And I've never seen a war, somebody doing war targeting just city, just the apartments where they know people live. So it's, it's just really bad, and let's pray for them because it could be us one day.
All right. I want to wish everybody a happy St.
Want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day. You know, most people in this world only get one day a year, their birthday, but people like myself named Patrick get a second day, so, even though I'm not a saint, my name is Patrick. So happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. And I echo the same comments that Mayor Pro Tem Glover said too, you know, continue to pray for the people of Ukraine. It is just awful to see the atrocities that are taking place overseas and to see those people that continue to suffer through the actions of, of... There you go, of, of someone that, you know, just is looking, looking to cause problems in our, in our coun, in our world, but keep, please keep praying for them, it's very tough for them. I know many of those people over there are suffering right now, and resource-wise, they're suffering, there's not many resources that are over there, food, water, shelter, and just safety overall, so continue to pray for them. And also, I mean, I think it's, it's a good reminder for us to know how awesome our country really is. We started off this meeting where we had several people that were able to come up here and speak during the public comment period, and they were able to speak and say whatever they wanted to, even if we disagree with it or we're in agreement with them, they have three minutes to come up here and speak, and they can go sit back down, they can walk out of here when they want to, and they have that right. If you look at other countries, you look at the news going on right now, there are people that are getting rounded up and being arrested for going out there and speaking their piece. So we are very fortunate to live in the country that we're living in right now, and I think we all need a, a gentle reminder every once in a while to realize how lucky we really are to live in the United States of America. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. McGirt. I believe you have a motion for us to go into a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, section 143, 3, 18.1183, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuits entitled Eric Stephen Farrington, Craig D. Mamrose, plaintiff versus city of Greenville, and Pitt County Board of Education defendants; second case, Mary Sue Vitavas, plaintiff versus city of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education; Field Burger, in his capacity as President Pro Tem Porey of the Senate; and Tim Moore, in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representatives defendants.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye? Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes six zero.
We are officially in closed session.